It's an education based in quantum physics. The theory combines the works of both Einstein and Newton. Unified Field Theory blends math and science to give insight into the very basis of our existence.
It turned out that people found mathematics to be one route. As you know, mathematics is a language. You know, it's a language of science. It's a language of everything.
Oyibo spent some time in Gainesville visiting with his family. He says he had been working on the theory for the past thirty-five years. Wow.
That's a lot of work.
Very impressive. That's all of our time. Thanks for joining us. Have a great day.
We'll see you later. Well, he's a nominee for the Nobel Prize in Physics, and he lives right here on Long Island. Professor Gabriel Aiebo can claim many accomplishments, but what got him nominated for the Nobel Prize is his theory of everything.
Doctor Gabriel Aiebo has answers to the questions that puzzled Einstein right up until his death. He has unified the theories of electromagnetic force and gravity while incorporating quantum physics. But if you look beyond first glance, you see Doctor Aiebo's breakthrough is far more than numbers and equations.
Ultimately, the unification of forces deals with the story of creation and the Almighty God. That basically tells the origin of where we come from.
In unifying the two theories of force, Doctor Aiebo believes he has unified everything in the universe, all of existence, from the physical to the spiritual. Everything comes from one single source.
The universe, as you see, is a force field. The universe being a force field then means that particles or things that you see are just concentrations of those that field.
Through his work, Aiebo says the scientific explanation of creation and the religious explanation are proven one in the same.
In the beginning, the universe was a wave field. A wave field is the same thing as the word of God because the word of God is also a wave. Sound wave.
It all sounds pretty amazing, while scientists around the world think so too. Doctor Aiebo has been nominated for the Nobel Prize in Physics, a lifetime of work ending in ultimate success.
It's a spiritual journey that started basically from elementary school, more or less, but eventually got properly in place by high school.
Doctor Aiebo spent thirty years working on his Unified Field Theory, and his journey is far from over. Aiebo's mission now is to share his discoveries with society, not just scientists, but everyday people, to help make the world a better place. Carolyn Costello, News 55.
Now they're going to meet a Dix Hills resident with some ties to Albert Einstein.
How about that, huh? And now this Nobel Prize nominated physics professor is opening new frontiers for all of us. The amazing story coming up on News 12 Long Island.
First though, how about today's installment of Alan Orrin's Names of Long Island, a joint project we're doing with Newsday. What's in the name Hellsight, the community with twenty-five... Welcome back to News 12 Long Island. We're going to salute a very talented Long Islander right now, Doctor Gabriel Aiebo of Dix Hills revising Einstein's famous theory of relativity. And his new calculations has earned him a Nobel Prize nomination for physics this year. We are very pleased to have Doctor Aiebo with us. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much, Doc.
All right. Science was my weakest subject by far, okay? So for me and the viewers out there, let's keep it nice and plain and simple. What exactly did you research?
Well, is the answer to the question, is it the Big Bang Theory that the universe came into existence, or the word of God, you know, which the scriptures says created the universe? And so Albert Einstein was preoccupied with how to find a solution, and he died in the process trying to find a solution. And so therefore, people recognized that that must be an interesting problem. So everybody jumped on the bandwagon, tried to find a solution. And what has happened is that we were able to be blessed by the Almighty God with a solution to that problem after studying his work for thirty-five years, you know? And basically what we found was that the account given by the science, which is the Big Bang Theory, I have a common denominator in a wave theory.
A wave theory?
Yes, because the Big Bang has a wave connotation to it in terms of the sound and explosion. And then the word of God is also a wave because that's a sound wave. So basically, the scriptures and science are speaking the same language.
Interesting.
Yes.
So the theory of relativity, of course, just explain that.
Yeah, the theory of relativity, you know, was on its way to answering the total question, and it dealt with the gravity, which is a major part of this force field. There are four of them that are known currently: gravity, electromagnetic, strong, and the weak forces, okay? The theory of relativity actually deals with the gravity component. Maxwell had dealt with electromagnetic. The strong and the weak has been puzzling everybody, so they want all those four combined. And what the equation did was to combine not just those four, but others that may not have been found yet.
And not to interrupt you, but you can see on the screen there the graphs that you put together.
Exactly. The graph that you're seeing there is the unification of the four force fields that are known, as well as those that have not been known yet. We were able to show that Maxwell and Einstein, as well as Newton, have one curve described, which is the first curve to the right there. It shows a force field that has a center right to the left, the beginning, what's called the origin. That's where the source of the force field that moves the universe is located. And from there, as you move away, you can see the force is coming down, meaning that it's diminishing, which is expected, like a ripple if you... So then the first one is electromagnetic, as well as the gravity, which is what Einstein wanted to unify. And then in the middle was your power estimate of the strong force field, because we needed that enough to build a bomb in the thirties and the forties. So, but they didn't have it, however, he made an estimate. We reproduced that in our solutions, as well as give the actual correct result for the strong force field, which is given, has a proper range to it. And then the one that's most elusive, which is the weak force field. And humanity needs to be concerned about the weak force field because neutrino is the source of basically cancer that we all have. Yes, yes, it permeates through, you know, tons of lead. If you pile lead, this thing goes through it, you know, damages our bones and everything else. Was no obstruction to this particular thing at all. But the force field has been very elusive. We found that one as well.
Okay. I'm sorry, Doctor Aiebo, for time purposes, we have to end there. You win the Nobel Prize, come back, and we'll chat, and we'll give you a lot more time. When will the awards be announced, by the way?
That should be in October sometime.
In October. All right. We hope to see you back. Congratulations, by the way. Representing Long Island, very proud.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right. Folks, please stay with us. We're going to check out the science of weather in a moment. A very nice forecast for you straight ahead, here on News 12 Long Island.
D nine, second.
All those in favor moving D nine to the floor, say aye. Aye. Suppose a no. D nine is on the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Doctor Aiebo and... Pardon me? Doctor Phillips?
Doctor Roy Phillips?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, gentlemen, I'm so proud to be here. Today we have a special guest that we brought from Miami to give our students in our schools. Our guest is a special person with non-outstanding work in field mathematics, mathematics, physics, aeronautics, Dr. Gabriel Aiebo. Doctor Aiebo is a Nigerian-born young man who came to the United States after the end of his education in the schools of Nigeria. This young man has distinguished himself in being a class with great scientists in our world. He studied and received his PhD in aeronautics and mathematics from the Renaissance Polytechnic Institute in Troy, New York, where he worked with NASA and gained international reputation for the work in mathematical physics, fluid dynamics, and aeronautics. He made many outstanding contributions in that area, in aircraft wing design and other significant contributions in that field. However, his most outstanding work is published in this book called The Grand Unified Theory. His work has united Newton's universal gravitation and Maxwell's electromagnetic force field with Einstein's general relativity and his unified force theories. Results of his work has brought together a nomination of him for the Nobel Prize in Mathematical Physics. His work is very voluminous work. I want to thank Doctor Ingram for allowing him to go around to our schools and to speak to the students about his great work. He has verified the theories of Doctor Einstein and taken it to another level. And his work is found in this great book, The Grand Unified Theory. I'd like to take this opportunity to bring forward, to have him speak to you briefly about his work, Doctor Aiebo.
It's a pleasure to be here. I've been asked to come and interact with the youngsters in your school area, and so far it's been a pleasure to interact with those youngsters. My history, on a brief note, started in a high school, similar to what you have here. At school called St. Augustine, I was caught making noise, and as a punishment, I was asked to add numbers from one to N. And the first week I did that, I sweated because the number, the last number, was large. The next week, they caught me again, and they gave me the same punishment, except the N number was larger. By the third week of the same punishment, I developed a formula to ease my pain. And the formula was, if N was the last number, I would divide that by two, then multiply by N plus one. And so it allowed me to do the punishment, of course. With that successfully done and proven mathematically, my discipline teacher stopped the punishment because it made possible for me to give the answer right quick. Then, of course, he called me to the office and said to me, "Do you realize what you've done?" And I said, "Well, I've just found a shortcut to your punishment." But he said, "No, beyond that." And I said, "No." He said, "Does the name Gauss mean anything to you, G-A-U-S-S?" And I said, "No." He said, "Well, he, along with Newton and Euler, are considered the most famous mathematicians of all time, and that Gauss came into that fame by developing the same formula." So I asked him for a book on Gauss, which he gave to me, and I read, and it was like he said. Then I went further, and I read more about Newton, and I read more about Albert Einstein. That's where I got started. I was already doing fairly well in geometry. As a matter of fact, they coined a name for me eventually after that formula development, calculus, by my colleagues. But I was very interested in geometry. I loved proofs. So when I discovered that relativity was geometry, it was fun. Then I also found out that E equals mc squared came out of that geometry of transformation. It was fascinating. I also learned that Einstein's colleague, Henrik Lorenz, was the second person to get a Nobel Prize in Physics. He was also a geometry type. I was fascinated. Then, of course, Albert Einstein would go to relativity theory, general relativity theory, to figure out the gravitational force that keeps the planet's motion. And he was on his way to actually formulating the unification of all the forces of the universe, but stopped because he passed on in nineteen fifty-five and left the problem uncompleted. So I made a vow to pursue the finding of a solution to that problem, but he left a hint that helped me. That hint was, he said, "You know, this problem is pretty difficult, but I believe in my guts, as I'm passing on to see my Creator, that the solution lies in geometry." So I went over my geometry and searched and searched, and eventually the solution came up, and we published that with American Math Society Reviews and the rest of the world. And we were fortunate to have been nominated for a Nobel Prize in Physics, Mathematical Physics, but I've been on the road ever since then, you know, trying to talk to youngsters like the ones that I'm talking to over here. So that's basically my story. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, and to our board and to our audience, we, as a preamble to just our saluting this great work, I was reminded, and I had the opportunity to present him with a staff that says Galileo. And I chose Galileo because Aristotle had a philosophy, much like Einstein, and in his philosophy, he said that weight taken up in a drop from a height, one weighed five pounds and the other weighed ten pounds, will hit the ground at different times. And Galileo took a look at that and said, "No, no, I find that that is not the reality." And Galileo called all of the learned minds together, put them at the base of the tower, and dropped the weights, both one five and one ten pounds, and they hit the ground at the same time. And all of the learned men saw this phenomenon, but they dismissed out of hand their own views, their own recognition of the information, and continued to support Aristotle's theory. Well, Doctor Aiebo has blown Einstein, not built on Einstein, I'm blowing it out of the water, but built on Einstein's theory. And we thought it important that our children would see an individual who challenged the process. And I don't know about you, but when I heard of Einstein, it was like somebody you could never touch, you know? In reality, he has touched him and carried the formula even further. So Mrs. Tuesdayall and Mr. Cavalo, if you would come forward as well, because they understood after we made the review to them and maneuvered the process so that we could have him come and speak to our children. And I don't want to ignore their effort. I don't want to ignore the fact, too, that Airborne Nowell gave me the insight to call him forward. So the board, School Board of Miami-Dade County, whereas the Gulfstream... Wait a minute, where am I going? I got the wrong one.
One minute?
Well, while they're getting me the right one, as Doctor Phillips mentioned, this is The Grand Unified Theory, formulation of the United Field Theory, or the Theory of Everything. And if you have an opportunity, this will be in our library, and you can come forward and pick it up and read it. Ah, thank you. Well, this will sure look different than the one I have. Whereas Doctor Gabriel Aiebo is a renowned scientist, mathematician, and nominee for the 2002 Nobel Prize in Physics. And whereas Doctor Aiebo will visit Miami-Dade County, or is visiting Miami-Dade County's public schools, October twenty-first through the twenty-fourth, to share with the students, the teachers, and others, his scientific expertise. And whereas Doctor Gabriel Aiebo has distinguished himself by developing The Grand Unified Theory, commonly referred to as The Theory of Everything, which has been affirmed by the scientific community as a revision and an extension of the similar works of Albert Einstein and Isaac Newton's Theory of Relativity and the gravitational force. And whereas the visit of Doctor Gabriel Aiebo has distinguished scholar, an African-American role model, to schools in Miami-Dade County, and particularly those with the Title I program, will serve as an inspiration to students. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Miami-Dade County, Florida, approved Resolution Number 0240 of the School Board of Miami-Dade County honoring Doctor Gabriel A. Aiebo for his visit and educational contributions to Miami-Dade County Public Schools presented this twenty-third day of October 2002, giving our students the word, signed by our chair, Mrs. Pearlis Tabarez Hatman, and our superintendent, the mayor, to a great man for a great work. One more. Come on. I just want to make it known that while we were having lunch earlier, Doctor Perez was there, and she was indicating, and I would agree, that I never thought I would meet a Nobel nominee up close and personal, but we've met him, and we're allowing our children to meet him. Well, thanks to our illustrious school board and our superintendent. God bless you, our chief.
Thank you. I have also the speakers...
Our beloved brothers and sisters, greetings to you. My name is Brother Ralph, a member of the staff at OFOPIT Institute of Technology. The institute is located at 205 Seamen Neck Road, Dix Hills, New York, zip 11746. So it's right here on Long Island. The telephone number there is area code 6312423069. Our website is www.geocities.com/igala1. Igala is spelled I-G-A-L-A, and the one is the digit one, not the word one. OFOPIT stands for Organization for African People's Participation in Technology. OFOPIT Institute of Technology is the official home of Ga-Gut, which is spelled G-A-G-U-T. Ga-Gut stands for God Almighty's Grand Unified Theory of Mathematical Physics and Beyond Current Okay. As indicated before, it is a theorem, not a theory. What do you mean by a theorem? Well, a theorem is something, a process, that has risen to the level of a mathematical proof. That is, a theorem provides a mathematical basis, in this instance, for a grand unified field, to use the term in the usual sense, theory, or the theory of everything. What do you mean by the theory of everything? We mean that the present physical cosmos in which we function is driven by essentially four different types of motion. The motion generated by gravity, the motion generated by electromagnetism, and at the subatomic level, the motion of the forces called strong and weak, as was a bit earlier indicated. The Western world, Western science, has been on a quest, at least from the time of Newton, actually quite before then, to get at the Grand Unified Theory. Why? Because therein, once in hand, is enormous extraordinary power to the people to whom such a theorem comes. Why? Because if you look at gravity, if you look at electromagnetism, strong and weak, there is no motion, as indicated, that cannot be explained through one of those four. And therein was the great challenge. The Caucasians knew that there were four presently known, but they didn't know how to combine them to make a grand unified. They put their best on it. He's the one purported to be the best, Albert Einstein. He built on the work, of course, of Newton relating to gravity or mechanics or motion, and he built or related to the work in electromagnetism of someone named Maxwell, Furt Maxwell.
So some progress was made regarding gravity, and some progress was made regarding electromagnetism. At a subsequent point, some work was done at the subatomic level, which is these days called quantum theory. Some calculations were done, different candidates were put forward, like the string theory and other approaches, but still it was separated out. Einstein went to his grave unable to achieve the brain-together of the four forces, that is, the capacity to articulate one force in terms of the balancing of a three, which gives you, shall we say, a lot of space to maneuver in the physical cosmos. So now we have the Grand Unified... ............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ Okay, let's say you drove yourself here in a product made by Ford or Chrysler or General Motors or Nissan. You say you're thinking a car has 200 horsepower. What is that teaching us? Well, that's 200 times one horsepower. If your ancestors come to a gathering 100 years ago using one horsepower, now you come today with 200 horsepower in a little box, perhaps 4 feet by, 3 feet by 2 feet. What are you driving down the street? You drive me living, breathing, modeling, technology, mathematical physics applied against a force multiplier, you've invested 200 times. So that's transportation. How many folks here have a cellphone? How many folks here have a regular landmine phone at home? That's about everybody. So that if you take your natural voice, perhaps you can be heard clearly a block away, maybe two blocks away. If you get eight block lengths of miles, we'll call it a forty mile. And on the weekend, perhaps without even cars directly, you get with a cellphone called to the state LA, 3,000 miles away. That again is a force multiplier through the power of modeling, 12,000 times. And that's what you get in the end. With Ga-Gut, God Almighty's Grand Unified Theory, we go to another level. The examples just mentioned, and there are thousands, millions of more examples, all fall out of but two values inside of Ga-Gut, in which there are contained plus and minus infinity value generating capability.
Means you can start on the minus side and go from minus 1 to minus infinity, meaning never stop that iteration. You could go from plus 1 out that way, never stop the positive iteration. Two of those values pick up the whole in its essence of Einstein, Newton, and Maxwell's work and some of the work Schrödinger in quantum mechanics, where it's Ga-Gut to repeat gives us plus and minus infinity. So that's something of the so what of Ga-Gut. We are walking around in a world of modeling. What has been gifted to us now from Almighty God is the capacity to build a new world of supreme modeling, which brings with it then all the products, the economic and financial gains inherent of the supremacy of modeling capability. That's something of Ga-Gut. As has perhaps been somewhat indicated, when you have a unified field, the particular physical objects therein functionally are concentrations in a field, which distinguishes that perception from that of Newton who, to put it roughly, saw things as billiard ball, sharp edges stop and start rather than concentrations in a field. We have present with us this afternoon, as has already been indicated, an extraordinary concentration in the field. This concentration is a human being, a black man, an original man, an African. This extraordinary concentration in the field is a continental African, specifically from Nigeria, a wonderful place that I have been fortunate to visit. This extraordinary concentration in the field, as has already been indicated, was trained by the elders in the continent within Nigeria and also received extraordinary training here in what is called the United States of America, specifically receiving a PhD in aeronautics and mathematics from Rensselaer Polytech Institute, one of the top such institutes here within the United States located in Troy, New York. This extraordinary concentration in the field then went on to do stellar work in numerous mathematical fields such as aeronautics, astronautics, mechanical engineering within aeronautics, the wing design, work for NASA, associated with Boeing. In fact, in one year, this individual had more published work in a particular aeronautics journal than any combination of black or white scientists put together. And the folks who published it knew he was black and from Nigeria, but his stuff was so good, they just had to put it in there. This brother's work has been reviewed by the American Mathematical Society and also the European Mathematical Society, which can be viewed in combination as something like the Supreme Court of Western Mathematical Thought. You can be a brilliant mathematician, a very talented mathematician, you can be a white mathematician and never get an AMS. Whereas the work of Ga-Gut is in there and taking up plenty of space. As was indicated, they got their best together and after they did their best to try and flaw it, they found it more prudent to bow. So that this recognition has been given and the practical point now is for us, we black folks, we African folks, to stand in witness to this work and begin the process of its application within our lives. So on that immediate practical point, we invite you to call us at Ofopit Institute, to visit with us at the website, and also to participate in a pledge campaign that we have that we will tell you about more at a later point. So that this brother, and of course, I'm referring to the brother to my immediate rights, is the founder of Ofopit Institute of Technology. He is the chairman of the Department of Mathematics at Ofopit. He is a professor in mathematics and mathematical physics at the University of Bridgeport, Bridgeport, Connecticut. And he is also a brother whom I think we can mention has a good appreciation of James Brown. I present to you, please now, help me in bringing forward before us with a warm and hearty and hopeful presence, Professor Gabriel A. Iebo, discoverer of the fourth of the Almighty God of the Grand Unified Theory of Mathematical Physics and Beyond.